Calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, January 22, 2024. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. Tonight, we're always going to start with the board and administrative role calls. Mr. Felth here, Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Danielson.
Here.
Ms. Schultz.
Here.
Ms. Getzko.
Here.
Ms. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. O'Neal.
Here.
Mr. Schuler.
Here.
Mr. Henin.
Here.
Mr. Gerton.
Here.
Ms. Payton.
Here.
Ms. Dimmler.
Here.
Mr. Vio.
Here.
Mr. Samansky.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have had no public comments prior to the meeting, so moving on to our first action and discussion item, a motion to approve the attached agenda and addendums.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, second by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item three, the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes from the regular school board meeting on December 18, 2023, the truth and taxation meeting on December 18, 2023, and the special session for the reorganizational meeting that we had on January 8, 2024, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, second by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item four, the recognitions, presentations, and showcase. And tonight, we have Ms. Mizuraka with us to give us the new website overview. The floor is yours.
Well, this is our new website. I've been working on it for a while, but I'm excited to show it off now, finally. Right now, when you look at the website, it has kind of a page pop that welcomes everybody. That'll go away after a week or two, but just letting people know that, hey, this is new. We needed to switch our website vendor because Blackboard, that our previous website was through, was purchased by Final Site, so we had until 2025 to roll everything over to a new site. We researched different vendors and went ahead and went with Final Site. The program that you use on the back end for editing and stuff is really nice, so much easier to use than the old Blackboard site. So I've, it's been a big learning curve to figure it all out, but I've really enjoyed working with it now that I know how to use it. There's a lot more that you can do with it than we could with our old site. As we were going through this process of rolling everything over and switching and creating our new website, I had a few different goals. One was doing a better job highlighting and showcasing the things that we do at Watertown Mayor, so you'll see a lot more photos and videos on our site than our old one had. We had one of our former students, Matt Meish, come for a day, and he did videography, and he did a really good job. It was homecoming, so everybody was in their Royals gear, but he, yeah, got some great photo and video for us to use on our website. Other things to highlight, like things that are going on in our schools, I have a news and announcement section for the district, and there's also a news and announcement section like this for each of our building pages, and I can show you that in a bit, too. One of the cool things about that news and announcement section is that the district page pulls news and announcements that Heather puts on there, but it also pulls from all the other buildings and from the activities page, so it's kind of a compilation of all of them. That way Heather isn't having to make a post every single time that something happens in each one of the buildings, too, like they can promote their stuff, and it just automatically pops up on our site. We did a lot of cleanup on old content. There was a lot of stuff that needed to be updated, and the navigation is a lot easier to use, just kind of reorganize stuff, combine like things, just to make it a little bit easier for end users. We also did some work on online registration, making that a little bit easier to find on our website, so we've got the online registration button there. We also added a place for families to schedule a tour, so if they're interested in coming and visiting and checking out our schools, there's a spot right there where they can request to do that. Oh, I was told I should show you the school board page.
That's the most important, right?
Yeah, but it is a good way to see kind of the organization of pages, navigation easy on the left and on the top, a little bit more organized than it was before. There's your picture. And then each individual building has their own site within our website. They have that news and announcement section. There's a calendar for each building, and then there's also a full district calendar. You get a quick little snapshot, and then when you hit view full calendar, you'll see the whole calendar for the building. This syncs with our Google calendars that are already managed by our secretary, so they're not having to, like, go and add things to another place. It just syncs, and it's really easy to use for them. Our district calendar, one thing that our old website that didn't do, that this site can do, is filter the calendar, and I really like that. So when you're looking at our district site calendar, you can hit this little calendars button, and if you have students that are only in, you know, two buildings, you can check those buildings, hit update calendar, and then see only events for the buildings that your students are in. So that's another feature that I like.
And then Brittany, I think, too, that, or, you can, like, put that to your, like, iCalendar, I think, correct?
Yes. I haven't actually tested it, but you can get the iCal links, and you can have it, yeah, synced with your phone and your own calendars. There's also, when I was playing with this today, you can get a Google link, too, so it's another nice feature. Let's see, some other things I was going to show. The activities page, we did a lot of work kind of reorganizing the activities page, got a lot of feedback from Paul on, and looking at different districts and how their activities pages are organized, so that's done. We used to have individual pages for every sport and activity, but they weren't getting maintained. Coaches and advisors are using other methods to communicate with families now, so we got rid of all of those, and we have just, like, quick contact information, so that's really nice, too. Kind of next steps, I'm still in the process of getting things updated for our mobile app. Once the site was live, then we could start the process for the mobile app, so hopefully that'll be updated pretty quick here. I'll be training in all of our building admin assistants on how to make updates on the site, so Heather and myself will be kind of in charge of updating, like, the district page, and then each of the building admin assistants will be in charge of updating their building pages. I still have to figure out the, what that training's going to look like with them, but yeah. Do you have any questions for me?
Will you guys have, like, process and proceed, like, a procedure for how frequently they need to update, or anything like that?
Not a, like, set procedure, but during the school year, it's maintaining information. The main thing that changes is calendars and, like, the news and announcement stuff, but because those are both now, like, the calendar syncs with our Google calendars, and that news and announcement section, it's almost like running a blog. It's really easy for them to maintain, so during the school year, that's the focus, and then during the summer, that's when they should be doing kind of a sweep-through their building pages and sites and updating, you know, teachers' names and that sort of information.
What about, like, the videos and the pictures, is that?
So I have four, like, rotating, they call them galleries, for each of the pages built already, and I figured probably once a quarter I would switch those out so that there's fresh pictures and videos there. As far as shooting new stuff, there's not really a plan at the moment for getting new pictures and things, but these'll, these'll work for at least a few years.
Yeah.
Thank you for putting the streaming link up on the top.
Oh, yes, that was a special request.
My mother will appreciate it.
Right there.
From Mrs. Burns.
But you're right, that is what a lot of people go to our website for, so it's easy to find now.
Yes, because I can't tell you how many, like, other schools and games we go to, and you're, like, just trying to find where you can locate their, I mean, it's nice that our activities, we'll put it on our calendar, like, the little camera icon if there is, but they sometimes have it and don't, like, tell everybody that they have it still, so that's nice that we have it available for.
I think it looks great. I was playing around with it when we got sent last week, and I just thought it looked awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And appreciate all the hard work, moving everything over and the cleanup. I know there's still more to do, but that's a never-ending job.
Yes, yeah.
Awesome.
Anything else for Brittany?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you again for all your help.
She needs to go. Good night.
All right, moving on to item five, which is our first action, item A, which is the first and only read of district policies requiring annual review. Superintendent Schuler.
Yes, here, I'm just going to jump back real quick. This set is the first and only read of the annual policies that we review every January. Just wanted to highlight again, the neat part about this is we did a lot of this work back in July, August, in that timeframe, when the legislature made those significant changes. If you, if you recall, the policy committee did meet last Thursday and did a review. Again, most of this is just in some of the statutes that have changed, but a lot of the work, again, in these policies were completed back in the summer, so we are pretty fortunate not to have to do a heavy lift there, so we're looking for a first and only read.
I'll make a motion to approve the first and only read of the district policies that were listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Felth, second by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion on the policies? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B, first read of district policies requiring review, Mr. Schuler.
All right, well, let's see, I'm trying to get back on track here. There we go, sorry about that. Okay. All right, the next policy is policy 413. Just want to take a second to highlight just a change there, again, a legislative change that occurred this past summer. In the green, it notes that this past summer legislative session, the legislature amended the definition of sexual orientation in the Human Rights Act. What they're doing is saying, "School boards, you have the option to choose that language", which says, "including gender identity or expression", and that's highlighted in green a few places within the, within the policy. In discussion on Thursday in the policy committee, the discussion was basically, "Let's leave that out. If the state is saying that we're not going to need to have that in there, we'll leave that section out. We feel like it's covered on our current language under sexual orientation, so we felt that this time that the board or the policy committee is recommending to remove that section."
And then this is the first read with a follow-up, second read next in February.
Correct.
We'd also like to point out that it's also listed out there, as Mr. Schuler has scrolled down in that page three, it also goes into more detail about.
More depth.
Yeah.
So no need to call it out somewhere else.
Correct, we just felt it was redundant and unnecessary.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, second by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, the second and final read of district policies requiring review, looks like it's library material 606-5.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Board, this is policy 606.5. This is library materials that we brought to you back in December as a first read. There have been no changes since the last review of this policy. Policy Committee, again, on Thursday, did have an opportunity to weigh in. I think we all were very comfortable with where this was left, and we're recommending a second and final read.
I'll make a motion to approve 606.5.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Felth, second by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D, acknowledgement of donation, contributions, and fundraising. Mr. Schuler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this month, the robotics program is highlighted with some really nice donations, and I'll walk through those. Wilson Development is donating $1,000 to a robotic for supplies. Core Trust Bank, also $150 for robotic supplies. Laura Glasgow, $500 for robotic supplies. Nathan Brothers Erosion, $250 for robotic supplies. Scott Wakefield, for $250 robotic supplies. Mike Denami Construction, $1,000 for robotic supplies. And Trinity Lutheran Church for the Royals Room. Again, the Royals Room is a space where students can come and get snacks when needed for their snack breaks and what have you. $32.19 towards the Royals Room, so.
That was our loose change collection, actually.
Oh, I got a collection, very nice. Thank you to all of those donors.
Yes.
I love it, thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. O'Neal. Have a motion made by Mr. O'Neal. Have a motion made by Mr. Onell, seconded by Ms. Schultz, any further discussion? Thank you again for everybody that donates to the district, you know, especially the robotics, and I don't think they could do what they do without all their donations, so. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Resolution 24.14, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, Mr. Chair, annually, we come forth to the Board with the resolution directing the administration and myself to make recommendations for reductions in programming and positions, again, due to possible student enrollment decline, funding sources, and multiple other reasons that could mean that we have to reduce either staffing or programming. So again, no actions at this time is being taken to do any of the above, but this just gives us the right to start that process of reviewing the budget and obviously if there is reductions, we'll be coming back to you to recommend those. But certainly the Finance Committee will be in the loop as well here shortly on kind of the budget status, moving into the end of the school year and into looking to next year, so we'll keep them informed. But again, this is just an annual resolution that we do.
For you guys just to talk about if needed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there a motion?
I make motion to approve Resolution 24.14.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. Burns, any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item F, Resolution 24.15, to award bid for work scope number one to New Look Contracting and to award bid for work scope number two to Kilmer Electric, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, we're moving forward with a resolution to hire a new look contractor as the low bid for work scope one and Kilmer Electric for work scope two. And again, to allow ICS to manage the construction project and proceed with drafting and facilitating the execution of the construction contracts on our district's behalf.
And so work scope one is all the earthwork, parking lot improvements, and work scope two is lighting in the district, so parking lots as well as outside building lighting.
More documents to share here. Move approval.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Getzko, any further discussion on the resolution?
These were favorable bids, correct?
Yes, very much so.
I think I remember that.
You hear it from us and you hear it from Mr. Zimer, too, so. Yes, they were definitely favorable in our.
And below budget.
Below budget, awesome.
That's why we were able to add the alternate one, which is the paving of the dirt parking lot on the high school there.
Got it, that would be really nice.
All right, any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Did I say the motion was made by Mr. Burns and seconded by Ms. Getzko?
Yes, you did.
Did I miss that?
No, you said it.
Okay, losing my mind. That's for the action items tonight, folks. Moving on to the review and information items, the Bond Referendum Project Updates, Mr. Zimer.
Fairly short tonight, obviously the paving bids you just awarded were favorable, so we're looking forward to that. It's the same team as did the stadium, so familiar contractors and we had good luck with them, so. Updates, greenhouse is pretty much complete. I think we're still waiting on certification of the water meter, but other than that, we're going to have an inspection for occupancy and then final will be the spring when we can do some of the concrete work out there, so. And then the only other update is the pool. So we're tracking for the most part with schedule. There've been two, I guess, call them difficulties that we ran into. One was a part that we couldn't get, it's a tee that fits into a strainer. We figured out that they can actually construct that, we did talk about that with Bach, they were fine with that, but they've actually tracked down all the material for that now, so they're going to proceed with that. The second being, our friends at the Minnesota Plumbing Department having an argument basically about nothing what it ended up being, so. The piping that we have in the project is all approval, as was approved. He went off on a tangent that basically spent about five days of trying to get it sorted out, so. All the deck drain piping now can go in, they've got that ordered, so it'll get the site here hopefully by the end of the week, early next week. But so right now, filling the pool is scheduled for the fifth through the ninth to get it up to temperature. We're trying to figure out what the inspector's schedule is right now, that's really the hangup, we cannot get that from him. He hasn't given us his availability, so tentatively, we're looking at inspection the week of the 12th, early that week, and as soon as that inspection's done, pending no issues with chemical balance or temperature, should be ready for use. Or best case, we can get them there the ninth, that Friday, when hopefully we're up to temperature and balance as well, so. A little bit of leeway right now and we'll know more as this week kind of carries on and we get some of those dates and we'll obviously be in communication with the district as to when the pool will be ready for use.
And the faster we can get it up to temperature would be great for me.
Yes.
We have swimming lessons.
I actually learned you actually have to have it up to temp to do the inspection.
Okay, that's good, that's good.
They won't do it until it gets to that.
I appreciate that and so does my three-year-old.
What is the ideal temp? I don't know.
It's always cold anyway.
For me or pool?
Yeah.
I like the hot tub, but that's just me.
I just want to add, too, I know in the greenhouse, we are pretty much officially underway. Like you said, the water meter piece is just about wrapped up, so we should be having water flowing here soon. And just want to say, too, we did have some training last week. Mr. Burns was a part of that, seven of us, including Mr. Henon in the audience as well was a part of that, from Wadsworth Controls. So a lot of the the features within the greenhouse are controlled on an app or by wireless on our Chromebooks, basically. Mr. Anderson will be the main controller, but as Jim knows, too, it's pretty self-explanatory, it kind of runs itself and it adjusts, it's pretty amazing. When the rains start to come, it shuts on its own. I mean, it's the amazing technology, that's the one thing that I was shocked by is just the level of of technology within the greenhouse. And I talked to Mr. Anderson today, I think he's ordering his plugs today to begin the planting and we should have hopefully a plant sale coming up here for Mother's Day, so it's starting to get getting real, as they say, it's pretty exciting, so. At some point, we need to give our board members to a tour of that, once maybe things get going and growing a little bit, it's pretty neat, so.
Did we do have any more discussions about food sourcing for the cafeteria?
It's been in discussion, yeah, I think, I don't see that happening this year probably, but down the road, once we get established a little bit, absolutely, there'll be some type of arrangement. I know Beth from our food services is interested in teaming, helping out with that and making it happen, so, yeah, it'll be neat. They've done some of that in the past with the school garden, so.
Right, right, I know, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Does the school garden over at the elementary school still like being?
Yeah, it just kind of got rekindled, there was a COVID period of time there where it went away and then Ms. O'Connell and one particular teacher, I think, kind of took that task on and really revived it last summer, so it's it's back in functioning.
Also, with project updates, is there any update on the flooring in the middle school?
Yes, on track with what we had agreed to in the agreement, so spring break, they'll get the rest of the demolition done.
Okay.
They hold up, well, two-part, they need the demolition done and then they're actually going to revisit the product they're going to put on top of it before they put the flooring down. Funny enough, there's no moisture, obviously, and the product they put down is almost harder than the concrete that's on the floor, they're having a hard time actually getting it off the floor, so they're going to reevaluate that once they get the flooring off, figure out what we need to do, if anything, in certain areas, and then still scheduled for June to start that flooring. Colors have been picked, I believe we're okay with the pattern?
We are.
So, yep, a three-week lead time on materials, so there's really no scare there, it's just they'll get those procured and then I believe Bob's got a location at the high school somewhere where they can be stored temporarily, so.
Correct, yeah.
It's going to be similar to what was in there before, the same pattern?
Yeah, similar colors, similar pattern. And the one thing I didn't mention is everyone will probably notice when the pool opens that it actually is a different color inside the pool basin. Quite a bit of rough staining actually on the pool tile. The pool tile is actually white-ish, a white off-white, and there's actually gray on the two ends, so it's.
We never knew after all these years.
Yeah, right? Wow.
Just tells you how.
My daughter's a swimmer, so I'll be really excited to see the finished pattern.
It'll be bright.
Yeah.
Dim lights in there, the reflection. Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Chris. Item B, Strategic Plan Update, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just in continuing with our monthly update on how we're doing and our, and it's funny, it's we just got an email from Bruce Miles sharing out, it's our one-year kind of anniversary, if you will, of our plan and working towards the completion of our plan, so just some reminders there, but I really think we are getting that word out there. My communication this month to parents will be just that, communication. And one of our strategic commitments is communication. It will highlight some of the cool things we're doing with our, obviously, our vision card, how we're kind of rating ourselves in terms of how we're doing. Also, you'll notice some highlights of each one of our building communications, so Community Ed and they do a fantastic job of communicating, I think, biweekly, elementary, middle school, and high school now all have really good comprehensive newsletters, so we're going to highlight that. Some parents might not know that, hey, the high school has a newsletter, you can click on and see what theirs looks like or vice versa, that'll be nice. Also, just highlighting, again, some of our social media, ways that we get the word out amongst to the community and to our parents, and also our new website, obviously, will highlight that as well. So the the letter will have a lot of clicking options where you'll be able to click on some of these items and for parents to see those, so that'll be. And I think also may have shared with you our update that we spent, how we sent out to staff today, it's kind of our strategic plan quarterly update, and it just shows some highlights across the district of what we're doing to meet our goals, and that's been well-received, too, just to see what other buildings are doing and kind of sharing in that vision of moving us forward, so. And I know Mr. Yow will show here shortly some of the great progress we're making from our FAST testing in the winter, so some cool things to share there as well. That's my update.
Any questions? All right, moving on to the administrative reports, start out tonight with Mr. Henon.
Good evening, I have two things to share. One, we are starting registration for the 24-25 school year next week. We're actually meeting with our eighth graders on Monday during the day and then we're meeting with their parents on Monday night. And then we're meeting with the high school, the ninth through eleventh graders, I think on that Wednesday, the counselors and myself are going around to meet with all the different grade levels throughout that day, so they'll get all the information. And then they have about, you know, week to two weeks of meet with teachers, meet with counselors and so on. And again, a lot of information will go out, either in the newsletter, basically there's a link, each grade level has a page of their links and necessary information, and that will go out to parents as well, just so they have a chance to to see and then ask us any questions, just so they're involved in that process. We do have, I think there's 11 new classes next year ranging, there's some are independent study classes like business management, greenhouse management, production and design intern, two, there's some new literature courses, there's a college prep 101 course that the counselors are going to teach in the fall to, excuse me, to seniors. It's based on like a new topic each week, ranging from obviously financial aid to applying for scholarships to writing, you know, just the your your letter, you know, when you fill out applications. So just again, because we, you know, I think that's one of the things our seniors have said to us this year, and we talked to a bunch, that was, it's a challenge and it's, you know, depending on what college you go to, there might be completely different requirements. So we're kind of, you know, again, just some of those things like that that we didn't have this year, just to give kids, again, more preparation for, you know, getting their next steps. Then my second point of item is, I think Darren alluded to this in one of the communications too, but Tim Joshak and I applied for a grant a month or two ago to resource training. Tim has always had this idea of he wanted to, you know, print apparel and a student-led business, right? And we always said, wow, but it's expensive, say at least, and we put in for a $15,000 grant through resource training that was the highest we could ask for, and then about two weeks later, we got it, which was, it's exciting. So now we're in the process of, there's there's two options really we're looking at, one is a very traditional screen printing model that is significantly cheaper for the upfront cost, and there's a very advanced newer model that's much more expensive to look at, but there's a lot of advantages to that one, too. So we're actually going to get one of the printers out next week, I think, to try it and then do some visits and hopefully make a decision here in the next few weeks. Our goal is actually, fourth quarter of this year, to just start doing this. I think Amy Dimaler from Community Ed has given me about 1,000 t-shirts already that we can make for her. I mean, our goal with this whole thing is really have to be a student-run business. Students would take care of the orders, they would take care of all the inventory, they would actually do the productions, I mean, it would be with myself and Mr. Josh and Mr. Stowe providing the oversight, but it really would be a student-run business for it, and again, I mean, it kind of goes along with our, this is what we want kids to do, and what better internship could they have? So we're excited, again, we have some space and everything picked out now, it's just we just got to pick what we're actually going to use for the the products, but I think it could be something really cool for our kids. Again, that's a pretty good resume building, a pretty good internship-like form, basically, so. So, yeah, we're hoping, I mean, hoping, you know, in April, May, we're actually up and running, we can actually maybe even come in and they can show you some things they've done, so. Any questions?
Love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gerton.
A couple of things, I want to just highlight some of the work we're doing with goals. First of all, connect to the strategic plan. One of the things I wanted to talk with you about was a survey that we had the kids take in November. So it has led to us developing building norms for staff and it's been interesting, but what's really happening is we're putting together different things that we think are important for staff to understand in terms of how they're carrying themselves in the building and how they're communicating with kids and some of the things that we say and do that we don't maybe recognize, send a message to kids, if that makes sense. So in putting these together, we have just a lot of different things. For example, we have pieces about how you're greeting kids and using names when you're having confidential conversations, how you're handling redirection, you name it, so just understanding that your, whatever you're giving off to kids is what they're giving, so that whole, you know, idea of what you're mirroring, so to speak. We took that to our web students and shared some of that information with them and we ended up getting some really good feedback from them, and actually, what they were saying was, "We want to know more about our teachers, we want to know more about their personal lives, we want stronger connections, we love when they open up," and just was just reassuring to hear that from kids. So we're going to kind of be moving forward with some of those those norms for staff, and it's a good reminder for myself included, just to understand that everything that you do is communicating to kids, and we just have to really put ourselves in check and also just to understand this generation of kids and where they come from and what they know and what they are expecting and even just their perceptions of educators, so. Been a really good piece for us, and that's just directly connected to our building cultural goal. The second goal is an academic goal, and I'll let Joe talk details about the data, but from the middle school perspective, the hard work that our teachers have been doing with realignment and looking at assessments differently and just being intentionally deliberate is paying off in terms of the student growth that we're making, so very proud of that work that we're doing, and it's been very collaborative, again, working with Joe and just our teams of teachers, it's just been a really good year for us, so hopefully you'll see the end result of that this spring in terms of how kids are doing with meeting standards. Last goal is around homework. Today, our leadership team talked about homework and I think we just, it was about an hour-long conversation, and initially just we all agreed that from an equitable standpoint, homework doesn't have much of a place outside of schools, because if if it's something that kids need to do to be successful learners, there's just no way to level that playing field. So we kind of came back to talking about what can we do, what do we have the capacity to do, you know, with that 400-minute day that we have for kids to get the job done at school, and our marching orders are going to be looking at everything from how we use our flex time, how we use our interventions, how we're using instruction in the classroom, every minute of it, looking at just all the bits and pieces of what we are or not doing to get those kids more engaged during the day. It comes down to how are we doing during the day and expecting that we have to get the job done during the day. So kind of auditing and rebooting our programming in the middle school, so it'll be an interesting journey, but that's where we're at. I'm challenging them to be unconventional, you know, there are a lot of things that we've done historically in education. You know, there are a lot of things that we've done historically in education that really don't seem to make sense in terms of student learning, their traditions, their habits, letting kids have, you know, late assignments all quarter and knowing that they took a test on something midway through the quarter, but you're still going to have them turn in, you know, missing work related to getting ready for that test at the end of the quarter, and just really having to understand why we're doing what we're doing, what are we trying to accomplish here. So it's going to be a big step, but we feel like if we want to replace homework, what we need to do is do better inside those four walls during the day. So more to come on that, I'm excited. We have a really great team of people willing to do that work and lead that work. So shifting gears, just really quick, a couple more just basic announcements. It's busy in our building with long-term subs right now. Quite a few of our staff have decided to have children this year. Amy Johnson is long-term subbing for Caitlin Wires, and she just stepped in the door and has been doing a great job with that. She started in January. Vicki Tam Anderson just stepped out the door, and M.G. Shiran, who just graduated in a music program, just started working for her last week. She held her first concert the day after Vicki stepped out, but worked with one of our, with Miles Oztot, and they did a great job. We have one more Abby Pettit leaving this spring, and so we're working on securing that sub. We have somebody in mind. Also, in our special education department, one of our staff members unexpectedly decided to step down, so we have Stephanie Thaymer, who has stepped in to fill kind of the short-term role in our special ed department in a Level III program. So a lot of moving parts, but we're working together and things have gone really well. We are starting our registration process for next year in late February. We're trying to get a jumpstart on that, working with our current fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, and then we'll be heading over to the elementary to start working with our incoming fifth graders, our current fourth graders in March. Last thing is, please come see us at the PTO fundraiser on Saturday. Starts at 5:00. Have a taco, win some prizes, right? 5 until 8:00, or Middle School PTO is running that. So that's all we have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Connell is not here tonight, but you have the update for her.
I'll give her some, the Cliff Notes, how about that? She highlights, one of those strategic commitments, again, is all students reading at grade level in reading and math by the end of third grade. Again, and I think Joe will probably highlight this here shortly, but just some really amazing winter testing data was coming out, and she wanted to share that. Well, we'll let Joe highlight that. Again, two grade levels already passed their school improvement plan spring goal set for increasing the percentage of students in the low-risk category in first and second grades, so they're showing some really great growth there. Her secondary that she wanted to highlight was just the students feeling connected to their school, and they recently had roundup on January 11th for kindergartners. Again, we held it a little bit early this year, just to see if we can get more generation of families to come out. They had 57 families attend the event, and it sounds like it went very well. So now it's that continued outreach to get families to officially register and get on our roster, so we'll keep working on that, and I'm sure she'll provide updates here in February as well. Speaking of February, it's I Love to Read Month, and it's always a highlight, I think, of the board meeting agenda, to see our friends come in from first grade to read to us. That is on tap for next month, but it's also called Story Laboratory, and that'll be their theme this year. They'll have a kickoff event on February 29th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. To kickoff I Love to Read Month, or maybe wrap up, it sounds like.
January 29th?
Yeah, she said February 29th, but it must be January, because that would be closing it up.
Kind of late.
Yeah, so we'll say February, excuse me, January 29th, 4:00 to 6:00. Money's from the PTO, and donations from the Alliance Club helps fund this event, again, for families and related to the theme, Story Laboratory. That is Ms. O'Connell's report.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dimaler.
Hello. So we have an exciting week at the CLC. On Thursday, we have our open house, highlighting our early childhood programs and our childcare, and that will be from 4:30 to 6:00. So a great opportunity for families to come in and meet our staff, see our programs, sign up for screening, and get ready to register. Our early childhood registration actually opens that night at 8:00 p.m. We are excited and anxious. We've added a full-day class for next year, a four-day full day. So there's been buzz about it, and we're excited to see what registration looks like. Today, our preschool teachers did their monthly RPT meeting and had a great chance to talk about the data they've been collecting, setting their literacy goals for next month, and getting ready to wrap up our letters training. So they'll have met that requirement and be done with that in February. Childcare actually opens its registration on March 7th, so while we have the open house now, we'll get families ready to register for our summer and next-year programs. Our building had our DEI meeting this morning, and we had a chance to really look at our inclusive practices in our childcare and our preschool, make sure that they are aligned, I'm sorry, early childhood. So we took some time to really look at our handbooks and make sure that our inclusive practices both are collaborative and inclusive. And then finally, for just some general Community Ed, I am accepting proposals for summer programming, which are coming in and due on February 6th, and we plan to send our book to print by February 21st, so it is out mid-March and ready for registration in early April. And we'll be having an advisory meeting on February 13th. And then finally, for facilities, we are busy working and reviewing our facility policies and handbook. I've sent the edits out to our facility renters, our advisory, just to get some more feedback and plan to present that to you. We don't have a lot of changes for next year, some fees, actually just fees to the pool, kind of increasing that a little bit, and then just making sure all of our policies and procedures are in line. And finally, I just wanted to share that we are excited about the pool. We opened registration on January 8th, and we had 144 enrollments with 124 users within about a week. So we have a lot of people excited and ready to use our pool. So that's what I have. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Mr. Viall.
I feel like we need some music and fireworks for this.
I know.
Everyone defer to you. This better be good, Joe.
You're making me a little nervous. Are you going to face me?
I'll do, you just tell me, yep.
All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We hope not to disappoint, and we'll start from there. But yes, as Mr. Schuler mentioned, we're trying to keep everything aligned to our strategic plans, so the information that I'm going to share with you definitely relates to our commitment on learner outcomes and striving to achieve that every student is achieving at or above grade level in reading or math every year. So that's kind of where we're keeping our aim with this. So here's some fast data. Now, just to give you, just to give you some background here, I've got a GIF on every page, because what we did is we shared this with staff today at lunch. We had our professional development and our self-care lunch today in the high school, middle school cafeteria, and I didn't go through every slide like I'm going to go over with you, but I had this running in the background, and I wanted some little eye catchers in there, so, yeah. Anyway, so for our FAST scores, we had larger-than-expected growth in six of our nine grades in reading and seven of our nine grades in math. And I know, I've shared a lot of this information with you guys in the past, so those are certainly consistent and even a little bit better, but I have some other information in here too. Hopefully that'll be nice. So the highest growth rates ever in kindergarten and second grade for reading, and also in seventh and eighth grade math. So those were really, really encouraging. When I say the highest growth rates ever, that's, I believe, since 2018-19, so we've got about six years' worth of data to look back on. So those are excellent scores. We outperformed our six-year average growth rate in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 grades in reading and five grades in math. So again, that's higher than that six-year average. So again, just keep upping that ante, which is awesome. And we increased the percentage of students on track and at low risk in math in six of our nine grades. So moving those kids up or keeping them up into those top two categories is really important. We did that in six of the nine grades. We exceeded our fall-to-winter growth expectations by, so we took all nine grades in reading by 17% in reading and by 21% in math in all those scores. So that's, again, by one-fifth better than expected. That's pretty awesome. And yeah, here's one of my favorite slides. We exceeded growth, our expected growth, in three grades that were like phenomenal. Second grade exceeded their expected growth by 61%. So in other words, if you were expected to grow three points, they grew by three, four, five is 66%. So they grew by five points when their expected growth rate was three. So, and it was even higher than that because their expected growth rate was more than three points, but that's just to give you an example. Seventh grade by 62% from fall to winter. That's great. And the creme de la creme, eighth grade, a whopping 137%. I think somebody must have taken a test either Friday or today, because it's probably a little higher than that. We went up a couple decimal points since I divided that out. So probably close to 140%. So they more than doubled their expected growth rate in fall to winter. So that's just extremely exciting, wonderful on behalf of our teachers. And then also, I got some CLC information from Suzie, and for our four- and five-year-olds, we improved the top two categories. We moved, increased that by 41% from fall to winter. So again, even now in our middle, our CLC group, getting kids to be ready for kindergarten just keeps getting better. And so I just wanted to say, well done, students and staff. The students are the ones who are taking this, but the staff's the ones that are making it important for our kids to really get a good dipstick of where they're at, and that's what we want. We want a true accurate reflection of where the kids are at and how much they're growing. I think we've got some wonderful results this go around, so. That's all I had for you. Was that?
It lived up to the hype.
Did it? Good. Well, I didn't get any applause, but that's okay. It's not for me, it's for the kids, so.
And these numbers don't change our, like, expectations at all. I mean, for our winter to spring, correct? Like, those will main, I mean.
Correct. Like, our goals that we set at the beginning of the year, those goals are all for beginning to the end of year goals, correct?
So maybe see that growth continue.
Yep. That'd be phenomenal.
Some exciting things.
Congratulations.
Were the staff, like, pretty pumped about this?
Yeah, well, when they saw some of those numbers, they were pretty excited. Yeah, it was pretty cool to see.
I agree, and I think it goes really into the hard work that they've put in here, and we've asked a lot, and the training that we've provided, they've stepped up, and I think that's starting to show now. You know, I think in the elementary, the work that we've done with the letters training, I think in the middle school, the work they've done with alignment in the last summer and in this fall, and that continues, but those are some really telltale signs that it's making a difference, so it's exciting.
And the kids are the beneficiaries, that's the best.
Yeah.
I hope we get to highlight this somewhere.
Yeah, we've talked about that. I mean, one of the things that you don't want to pump your tires too hard in winter data, I want to, we'll pump it in the spring after an academic year to see if it stays consistent, but nonetheless, it's trending in the right direction. That's exciting, so, yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Peyton.
Greetings and Happy New Year from the special education team. Due to escalating mental health needs within our special education department, we find it necessary to post openings in both our elementary school and high school for a special education paraprofessional. And faced with a shortage of setting for programming, we have taken the initiative to establish tailored interventions within each of our schools, and the demanding nature of these services poses a significant challenge, particularly in light of all the staffing shortages that we have. Addressing the intensity of the support required for this, for these students remains a complex task that we are addressing. Now, Mr. Gertner shared our resignation of our setting three EBD teacher. Just know that we are very focused and diligently facilitating the onboarding process for our replacement teacher, trying to ensure a seamless transition in terms of both curriculum comprehension and due process procedures. We are currently in the midst of organizing our extended school year program, and we have finalized the dates for these sessions. The program will take place in the weeks of July 8th, July 15th, the 22nd, and July 29th, 40s each week, running from 8:30 to 11:30 each day. Save the date for upcoming Watertown Mayor Special Education Advisory Council, SEAC, meeting will be held on February 15th from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. The SEAC serves as a vital forum for providing input on special education matters within Watertown Mayor. It is important to note that the SEAC's role is advisory and advocacy-oriented and focused on offering insights rather than policy decisions. Today, the secondary special education teachers engaged in comprehensive fast bridge training, acquiring the necessary skills to proficiently conduct progress monitoring for their students. Overall, the special education team is dedicated, committed to the students and family, as well as a sense of community within our department, so are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schuler.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. My focus is going to be on the school lunch update, and we've had a lot of questions, like, I know, from community members, board members, about how is the free breakfast, the free lunch going? Thought I'd give you a quick mid-year update, and then our food service coordinator, Beth, put together a PowerPoint to add a little bit more about exactly what we're doing this year, and you can see some photos of some of the neat things that are happening in our cafeterias. First of all, with our enrollment being about 1,470, 1,470 students, since the start of the year, daily participation for breakfast is about 458 meals being served, and in lunch, using those same numbers, we're averaging about 1,186 meals a day, so that's definitely up from previous years. Out of the 73 days we've been in school this year, our meal counts are 33,505 breakfasts have been served, and then 86,631 lunch options, or lunches have been served. So again, it's really increased with the free, both breakfast and lunch. Also, just to highlight, I'll put on her slideshow here real quick. Again, really a focus this year on fresh foods, and that's been a highlight. I know that they've talked a lot about, one of the things you wanted to mention was the chicken salad, again, with fresh ingredients, as you can see, withholding chips and delivered every Monday morning, so it's a fresh salad, kids really enjoy that. Also, the chicken Caesar wrap, also very tasty. Wanted to highlight that, with USDA seasoned chicken, also a hit. Southwest Chicken Salad, I guess this is prepped by Jackie, one of their fine kitchen staff members, but you can see, this makes you want to have one of those, doesn't it? Pretty, pretty tasty. This is a sampling from time to time, they do sampling, and she wanted to highlight that they sampled pulled pork, pulledine? Pulteen, is that how you say that?
Pulteen.
Pulteen, thank you. They did it for a limited time here in January. I'm not sure if this gentleman likes it or not, looks like he's a little skeptical maybe, but nonetheless, it's kind of fun that they do these samples. Again, the fruit and the vegetable bar is offered deal, you can see, there's some amazing choices there too. Again, I think it looks a lot different from when some of us went to school a long time ago, but again, some great options, including those freshly-made salads, you know, the kiwi and other pasta salads as well, vegetable bar. Harvest of the month, I guess the harvest was kale. Yum, I guess some people might say that, some might not, but you can see the kale chips there. chips there. Again, a nice way to sample different types of vegetables. And again, the fresh daily choices, salads, sandwiches, wraps, again, very popular choices. And then here's her new fruit and vegetable bar, again, looks like broccoli salad in there, some really good tasty options. Here's just an example of a menu from Friday, December 8th. So this is what the kids see when they walk into the cafeteria. They, looks like it was the pizza parlor day with some options. The grab and go choices are always listed in the fresh choices also. And she made a highlight here, you can see students loved the roasted Brussels sprouts. That does sound really good. And again, all meals include the fresh fruit and the vegetable bar. There it is, Brussels sprout day.
Just trying some pizza.
Just balancing it all out.
That's right. I was wrong.
Trying the harvest of the month. Fresh cranberries, which is a new item this year, delivered again by all, for all students. Frying cranberries out for size. Now, this sounds good to me, the Philly cheesesteak with potato wedges. Again, they did that on a short run, it sounds like, just to try something. This day will be coming up soon. This is a hit for the kids, a lot of sugar for probably all of us, but the dipping donuts, kids get an opportunity to come in and put the, the dip on whatever they want for icing and glazing and then also the toppers. That was in October. I think she has another one coming up in February.
Oh, yeah. Look at that.
That's dangerous.
Do you know it's all like the vegetables and all that stuff and salads and then you go to the donuts?
Yeah.
This is last.
Well, you gotta throw something unhealthy in there every now and then.
Yeah.
Keep them coming back.
Also, this looks really good. I missed this day, I'm real disappointed, but November Harvest of the Month, pumpkin pie parfaits.
Yum.
Looks very good. And then coming up in February, I don't think she has a date nailed down, but Chef Murray, he's been out a few times to do some, the special meals and give the kids some trials on some different areas, but some, some penne is, is the choice this time and, yeah, it's usually fun for the kids to try that. And as always, Ms. Botfield says, you're always welcome as board members to come in and try it anytime. I think Erica, you took this up last year on the offer, if I remember correctly.
I did. I can't remember what it was.
Was it the paella?
Yes, it was delicious. Thank you, yes.
Heads up on the donuts. Heads up on the donuts.
Yeah, we'll send that out too, if you want to come for donut day. Absolutely. So that's just an overview. Thank you to Beth for putting this together and just giving us a quick overview. That's all I have.
Any questions? All right, moving on to board member reports. Looks like we had some facility committee meetings, which are again, every two weeks with ICS. And Chris gave you the update on all of our projects as of now.
Paraprofessional negotiations are coming up, 31st, 1st, and we've got a couple more.
Yeah, a couple more that didn't make it on this agenda because that just happened a couple of days ago, so.
Hopefully you'll get it all done on January 31st, right? That's right.
Yes.
You don't have to use anymore.
Let's hope so. That would be nice.
Policy committee met, used all the policies that we did. Marketing and communication, we meant to go over the new website, talk about streamlining our senior banners for our athletes, making those look a little more consistent, streamlined. And then, I'm sorry I had to step out, but we talked about the real estate piece of it after I left, I believe.
Yeah, just really looking at real estate listings in our community. I think that's one of the concerns that we have. Some of our staff, you know, right now, either can't afford what's listed or just not knowing what's listed. So we talked about ways to promote living in our community and just providing monthly listings in some of our staff lounges, just for staff to be able to take a peek on what's available out there. And Mr. Butcher and his real estate agency has agreed to kind of help put some things together for us each month. It's, it's basically the Watertown and Mayor area, but also includes kind of the fringe of us as well. Certainly within open enrollment guidelines there would work, so, but again, just trying to increase, even in our staff, because that is one of the concerns we hear from staff quite often, you know, available housing, available apartments, and also just affordability of homes in town.
Southwest met on Tuesday. We had our reorg as well. One of the changes for the board, for the negotiation team, we usually just had two people, we decided to add two more, two bigger districts, so we'll have Prior Lake and Betsy Waconia join the other two districts. We did have a lot of visitors that came for the open forum. We usually don't have any, but there's about five that really wanted to bring up to our attention the whole teacher negotiation contract, which the superintendents are going to meet along with the four from that board and kind of work on a plan because we do have a mediation on February 14th. So hopefully that goes well. Other things too during the meeting, which I was really happy about, there's been a lot of grants that they've applied for that we've gotten, so that will help. And then they also told us a little bit more about the international students that they came, that came actually, I think they arrived in January, so that's been going pretty well. So hopefully that'll help, especially with the teacher shortages that they've had. So that's, that's been kind of exciting. So hopefully the meeting on the 14th goes well. I think we, as long as we, we can come to an agreement, hopefully we can settle the contracts. But I think the main issue really is their benefits. Peep, not a good plan. So I think if we can work some plan and hopefully we can settle those for them, so.
Erica, how many staff are they negotiating, I mean, how, like what's the size of the staff for Southwest Metro that they're negotiating for? I'm just curious.
You know, I am not sure.
I want to say it's like 120-some, just rings a bell. I don't quote me on that in terms of staff on all their facilities, so these are all certified teachers, obviously, but yeah, they're, they're working through negotiations as Erica mentioned. I know as superintendents, we've met multiple times on helping set some parameters because what they've always done is taken the average of the 11-member districts in that first year and tried to find that average and that's where the settlements come in at. Given the shortages in special ed teaching, teachers out there, and Ms. Peyton noted that earlier, they felt they had to do some adjustments. So we've had a, a struggle in finding where that common zone is going to be, where the member districts are comfortable with the, the size of the increase that was proposed, to the point where I think they've actually set some mediation dates in case negotiations don't come to fruition. So mediation is set, I think, for mid-Fbruary.
Yeah, the 14th.
At this point, 14th, correct?
That seems to be a pretty hot topic right now, is teacher negotiations.
In a lot of districts, absolutely.
One thing though, too, pretty much each district pays a portion of that. So not only are most districts not done with their negotiation, then there's this one on top. So that's been kind of a, a hard one, so.
Yeah.
So fingers crossed.
The other week.
Congratulations, by the way, on your.
No. Oh, thanks.
The other week I went to the School Board Association Conference in Minneapolis in talking about negotiations out of our district or our region. We were the only district that has settled.
Wow.
Out of the people that showed up there.
Right.
Other neighboring districts are already set for mediation. They're probably, I think you had to wait till, is it February for mediation to start? So there's a lot of districts that are already at that point, some haven't even started negotiations.
I'm just curious, did they say what the main like concern, like what is the, the main thing that these, is it salary? Is it benefits? Is it, or is it just a culmination?
I think it says a combination of everything. It's, it's the state-funded or state, you know, the formula and then everybody wants their piece of the pie on that. So I mean, you know, congratulations to our personnel committee, you know, and, and our, you know, education group here too, that we settled early. The keynote was on talking about computer science, like, you know, coding, all of that fun stuff. And it was surprising to me, I think it was about 40 or 50% of the schools in the country have computer science classes in high school. Minnesota is last in the country. 28% of the schools have computer science.
That's actually surprising because Minneapolis itself is somewhat of a hotbed for technology. We have been called the Silicon Valley of the Midwest in the past.
But then you got to look outstate too. So it's kind of the yin and the yang, but yeah, they said 28% of Minnesota high school ones have it, you know? And, and there's also talk at the legislative level, level about pushing it toward a graduation requirement for, you have to have a computer science class to be able to graduate. I think in some of those districts that don't have it, that's going to be an interesting how-to. I was surprised to hear, Mr. Schuler, you talk about the, the penne pasta that was coming out for Tahoe. I was told it was Hawaiian tacos.
Oh, that sounds better.
Yeah, with pork bellies, yeah. They were good. He made them.
Yeah.
Gave them out at the conference. And then the, the closing keynote was a gentleman by the name of Ben Rudrud and his messaging was power of one. And listening to him talk and how it takes one teacher, he was a Minnesota graduate, lives down in Florida, but how one teacher in his high school career made that change for him. And I think that, to me, that really resonated with our tagline, the connections and opportunities. So it only takes one teacher, one staff member, one employee to make a difference in a kid's life. And to me, that, that was a closing keynote and my perspective, that should have been the opening because that kind of set the tone, you know? And Friday closing, I think we've all been to conferences, those aren't, those aren't highly attended, so that was a disappointing thing, but that was kind of the highlights that I had from the MSBA convention.
Well, the bigger highlight is congratulations to Chair Phelps for his landslide election and the hotly contested district elections. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Looking forward to having you represent us on the board.
Yeah, I can give MSBA updates now.
Perfect.
From inside the curtain. Anybody have anything else? All right, hearing that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Danson, second by Ms. Schultz. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, meeting's adjourned at 7:10 p.m.